Very good. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our regularly scheduled city council work session for Monday, June 30th. We do invite the public to attend and visit, but we do not allow public comment during the work session. And things we are discussing here are going to eventually be coming up in later sessions. So if you didn't have a chance to really suss out, you can find out more about it later on. And we'll go ahead and jump right in. Discussion item A, update to chapter seven of Title XI, land use regulations specific to density standards in the B1 zone district and front yard garage setbacks in residential zone districts. And Community Development Director Jace Hawke.
Yeah, good morning, Council. What I've got here is really two standalone code amendments. So as you know, with our newly adopted code as of December of last year, we're really implementing that in full force these days. And as expected, we see from time to time some things that need to change when it comes to code updates. I'm fortunate to say this is, I believe, the first code update or code amendment we've had in the last six months with the new code update. I talked to my colleagues, or former colleagues in Grand Junction. They've done about 50 over the course of the last 12 to 18 months. So I think we're in pretty good shape here. All that said, I will try to share my screen if I have any luck, but these are pretty straightforward code amendments, so I may not need it. And this is all in the packet here, but I wanted to just pull it up on the screen just so we all have eyes on it as I go through it. The first code amendment that we're looking at here is specific to density requirements in the B1 zone district, which is our central business zone district, really comprising our downtown core. As our code currently reads, density requirements in the B1 zone district for any residential uses need to match that of the R3A zone district. So, for example, if multifamily is being proposed within the B1, it would have to meet the 18 units per acre density standards that are set out within R3A. This creates a little bit of issue just due to the fact that a lot of downtown lots are very small. You've got taller buildings typically and smaller lots. So I had GIS pull up some data. What they came across just within the B1 zone district is that the average square footage for lots is 7,700 square feet, with a lot of lots actually below the 6,000 square foot threshold. With that density cap that we have, that would only accommodate about two to three units per parcel. If we want some more vibrancy within our downtown core, more density within our downtown core, I think we need to expand upon that. This was an add with our latest code update. We really wanted it to be consistent with all commercial properties, but I think we're backtracking on that a bit. I think now that we're seeing some interest in downtown development for housing, we're realizing that's not realistic. So what the proposal here would be, and this is really a discussion point, is to just eliminate that density cap completely within the B1 zone district. Allow, if a developer wants to come in, allow them to build as dense as they would like to, knowing that there's going to be limitations due to a variety of factors. You know, construction methods, parking is always a question that comes up, and developers know that parking is needed typically when you have new residential, especially over like five to six units. It just kind of needs to be accommodated. But that's code amendment number one. Just want to see some either head nods or some just open discussion about where you all stand, if that seems like an appropriate ask.
Now I'm live. I think you answered the question, but the first thing that rose in my mind was the parking issue.
Yep.
But do you think that that's probably self-regulating?
I do, I do. I think we, I think we have a lot of public parking spots now, particularly on the north side, that just aren't seen or utilized too often. So I think that really exposing those as we have more residential projects downtown is important. But as we talk with developers, you know, they recognize that to market residential units, you have to have some parking measures in place. And so while we don't necessarily have anything in our code that would dictate it, I think that they recognize that the market pretty much dictates that. And so, yeah, it would provide more flexibility for developers, but, yeah, I think it would regulate itself.
And we don't have any requirements for off-street. Sorry. Off-street parking.
Correct, yep. B1 zone district has no regulations for off-street parking. This is kind of unique. I dug back into the code consolidation process. So originally, we didn't have any density standards, actually. So pre-code adoption, no density threshold, but we had parking requirements for residential uses. We eliminated the parking requirements, but added the density cap with the most recent. And what we're proposing here is just to eliminate that density cap. So there's no parking restrictions, no density cap, providing greater flexibility.
I think one of my concerns with that, when we did building right here across the street with apartments up above it, they were supposed to park over on First and that parking lot. And we've had complaints along from the business people in here that the apartment renters are parking in the business spaces. Do we have any way to control that?
It's something that we've talked about at a staff level, is how to do some overnight parking permitting of some sort. We talked a little bit with the hotelier about that, and they didn't want to force that upon their clients necessarily. But I think that's something that we would definitely tackle in the review process with the developer, is knowing that that is a component to a future project, how do we tackle that on the front end? And I think having something in place like an overnight parking permit could effectively do that.
Kind of like the other councilors, I do have concerns about downtown parking. As a member of the DART board, there's been conversations with them, with the business owners, about the closeness of the parking for their business and how a lot of employees are parking in their spots and that sort of stuff. And the only way I could support it is to make sure that there is some way to address the parking issue. And the other question I have is, has anybody had any discussion with the downtown businesses concerning this, especially when it comes to the issue of parking?
Not specifically about this code amendment in particular here. I think we would be happy to. I think it would be more effective to have that when the projects actually come in and are being proposed. We could provide some of that detail to the DART board and to the downtown business owners. Tough to speculate exactly as to what's being built, because again, I do think the market does drive a lot of factors, parking included. But I certainly, I hear that concern. And I think that would be an open question here is, you know, if we move forward with this code amendment of eliminating that density cap, do we add some other measure in place that's not maybe as stringent, per se, but something that, you know, off-street overnight parking is required and the applicant needs to have a plan for that provided as part of the application process? You know, what measures could be effective in that regard, again, without making it overly strict on the developer? But to your point, I think we would gladly, when projects come in, want to bring this up with business owners.
Yeah, I think it'd be something that'd be an important issue to discuss with them, based on the fact that over the years, I've heard numerous complaints about the customers finding available parking spaces. And then if you start developing the downtown district and they occupy some of the outlined parking spots, then I think that we're going to be having problems in the future.
That was kind of the question, I think, that I raised and my concern about parking. But I think what Jace is telling us, that he thinks that's going to be self-regulating. If I'm a developer, correct me if I'm wrong, and I want to build five apartments, I'm going to determine whether there's a market for it, and part of that's going to be whether I have available parking, I think. And so I may not choose to, I mean, it's a market thing, I'm not...
Yeah, well, I'm interested in the available parking for the downtown businesses. The developers, sometimes when it comes to regulating themselves, they don't always do a good job, in my opinion. And so it's important that, for the benefit of the business community, that we make sure that this parking for rentals or whatever doesn't have a huge impact, or not going to have a huge impact, on the businesses of downtown. As we do, the city's revenues are based on sales, so.
I think one of the things in the DART meeting that was discussed, though, is that the biggest problem isn't necessarily apartments. It's the employees of the business parking and the front-facing parking. That if we can get the employees of the businesses to recognize that we have a lot of, a lot of parking, it's just not right next to the building, I think, you know, that's more of the uphill battle. Having said that, though, I do like the idea of establishing some sort of parking requirements if we eliminate the cap, so that we have some sort of a backstop, that if somebody comes in and wants to develop 10 units, that they have to come up with some reasonable accommodation for parking.
I just want to remind everybody in our comprehensive plan that our number-one goal was to add mixed-use commercial development and residential downtown, and increase density. It's in the best interest of all the businesses downtown to have people living downtown, because they'll shop and eat at those facilities, and you can't have conflicting priorities. So in order to accomplish that goal from our comprehensive plan, which had whole community input, hundreds and hundreds of people involved, adding high-density downtown was in the greater interest of the entire community. So that's why we're doing this, to make it more flexible and actually practical. It's not practical right now. That's why we've only seen the Vine project, which was eight years ago, or whenever that was. Nobody is building higher-density residential downtown because our code's too restrictive in the world of parking. So can't really add in parking requirements and expect people to do that. But we have it in the site development discussions, and we have that in the DART discussions. And you're exactly right with the employees. We know, we've talked to all the business owners over the years, employees' parking in prime spots is the number-one issue. We also know we have over 3,500 parking stalls within a four-block radius downtown. So there is not a lack of parking. It's all about education and communication. And I think over the last couple of years, Michelle and the DART team, and a lot of you go to those meetings, the communication level's really high right now with our business owners. And so I think as we move forward, as Jace suggested, these things will be worked out on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis. There's no real way to establish a code amendment that is going to apply equally to every project, because one could be right downtown by Centennial Plaza, like a project we're going to talk about later today. Or one might be three blocks north, where there's huge empty parking lots that nobody uses. So we just don't know until those come in, and we have a really good team in planning that will work through those particular issues. And then that, of course, goes to planning commission and council, and goes through the whole public process at that point.
I think some of the complaints we had with the Vine project wasn't so much employees as it was the people renting the apartments were parking there. And overnight was as big a problem as their cars are still there during the day using up those spaces. And for some reason, people are going on a 15-mile hike, but they won't park a half a block away in the parking lot.
So I can't argue that. But also, we did make it available to the owners of that particular building. They could have required their tenants to use overnight parking via a permit process that we recommended back then. We've yet to, like Jace mentioned, implement a permit piece, because those particular landlords did not want to go the route of a permit process. It's very simple to establish one. We've done it in other communities. You know, the landlord pays $25 a year or something for the clerk's office to handle it, and then they issue parking permits to go into those lots that are one block away. So I think those are all things that we can work on.
Yeah, I like the idea of the permitting process as that measure of allocating parking. I do like that. I think that's a valuable tool. And like you said, we do a lot of vetting through in the review process. So it's, if they say, "Oh, we're just going to let our people park here," then we could have the option of saying, "That's not a viable option."
What we could do...
Whatever location and specific circumstances.
Exactly. I wholly agree. I think what we could do as part of the site development process is just require essentially a parking plan, what their outlined parking strategy will be. That wouldn't go to council, that would be handled internally by staff, that wouldn't be codified, but again, just part of that application process. Again, as we see, as you, if you get kind of in too much of the weeds with some of these code amendments and code changes, it can make it overly restrictive without that ever being the intention. And so that's why we're kind of stripping it back here. So.
I like it.
I agree. We should move forward with that.
All right. So anything else on the density?
That's good on the density. I knew that would be the longer of the discussions. The next one is specific to setbacks for garages. This one's kind of a unique one. In the prior code, before December, we allowed for 15-foot front yard setbacks in the R3, R3A, and R4 zone districts, or medium and higher-density zone districts. What this caused was vehicle encroachments into sidewalks. So if you go to a couple of subdivisions, I won't name any, but a few that have that 15-foot, you'll see those encroachments that exist. So with our code update, we shifted that to 25 feet. So the house itself, the livable area of the house, could still be 15 feet. The garage had to be set back 25 feet to accommodate for vehicles in the driveway that would not encroach. We've had a lot of communication with developers just over the last month or so on this, and I think we all feel like 25 feet, maybe we overstepped our boundary a little bit there. We kept it consistent with other zone districts, but realizing, maybe we can pare that down. So our strategy here is to pull that 25 feet back to 20 feet. That's appropriate car width or car length. Our standard parking space is 19 feet that you would see in a parking lot. So our proposal is just to shift that 25 feet to 20 feet, and I think that is a slight compromise on our end without going back to 15 feet and creating more problems. But pretty straightforward on that one, so happy to answer any questions.
I like that, makes sense. We had a house in town that was a 15-foot, and I could not park my truck...
Yep.
...without blocking the sidewalk.
20 feet seems to be the industry standard when there's garages at hand, just for that exact reason, so.
All right. You have any questions for Jace?
Supportive?
As a builder, I've had some experience where the 25 feet was just a little bit too long to be able to get an appropriate, say, designed house on it. And then, but I think 20 feet is a good compromise.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Heads are nodding, so.
And just as far as the process goes, what I'll do moving forward, I'll get this on the city council agenda for the mid-August meeting for first reading, and then second reading would be that, or, excuse me, mid-July meeting, and then second reading and the early August meeting with both of these.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Item B, acceptance of grant award funds for wildfire mitigation and forest health initiatives from Colorado State Forest Service, and this is a team effort. So we have Dan Payne, Chris Sotinger, and Emergency Manager Paul Eller.
Morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you today. As you mentioned, Dan and Paul are here to present this alongside me. This is a grant that came to us from the State Forest Service, then talks with them. Dan has strong communication with the State Forest Service, and an opportunity came up to use some congressionally-designated funds that the state had obtained. And the state said, "Hey, we've got these funds. Would you like to use them for wildfire mitigation?" And we had a few discussions with them. It was a little bit of a longer timeline than we expected, but essentially, this ends up being about $329,723 of no-matching funds. The projects that were targeted are the Cerise Park River Bottom area was highlighted as an extreme fire danger, as well as projects for, and planning projects in particular, for Buckhorn Lakes and the 600 acres that are up there that is extremely high on the wildfire danger list. So these things have been identified by the State Forest Service along with Dan and Paul, and so we want to present this to you today and ask if you would like to accept these funds. There is no match requirement, so that's one of the nice things about this as well. Maybe a little bit of extra reporting since it's technically federal funds that we're being, excuse me, utilizing, but we think this is a great opportunity to leverage funds being offered. And with that, I'll open up for questions and...
One question I would have is, are we considering the elimination or harvesting of beetle kill from up by Buckhorn?
This grant, this grant will be specifically for planning, what we're going to do up there. So right now, we have, we don't know. There needs to be an assessment done to see what's up there, what needs to go, what needs to stay. So this grant will cover those steps.
Kind of just a little curious on the eventual goal of the planning is, of course, mitigation of the wildfire hazard. If that involves removing trees, would we be contracting, and I'm kind of looking back there at you, so, would we be contracting with private organizations to do the harvesting of timber to reduce that fire load?
Yes.
And if so, would we, would we see any benefit? Trying to figure out how to say this. Would we be selling the trees to the lumber mill? Or would that private organization that harvests them do that?
You know, those details aren't laid out, so I couldn't really...
At the top of the head, maybe.
Yeah, I would imagine we would be part of the bid. The contractor would have to, you know, sell the material, so it's not just wasted. But that would be all in the bid process.
Very good. Thank you.
I understand there's no matching funds requirement. I'll ask this question, I think I know the answer to it, but just to put it on the record, there are no other strings attached to receiving these funds?
None that we see that would be beyond typical federal fund usage, some of those kinds of requirements that would go along with it.
Some of the congressionally-designated funds have some pretty odd strings.
Right, exactly. And part of that's, part of that's also mitigated by that this is coming through the state as well, so they do a lot of reporting, and we just report to them, not directly to the federal government.
And I guess the final question I would have is that, are we also including in this planning the, around the bike paths on the Arroyos, some of the fire mitigation in those areas as well? Or is this specific to Cerise and Buckhorn?
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council, this grant is particularly for Cerise Park and for Buckhorn Lakes Park. It's meant and designed to get rid of the undergrowth and understory in Cerise Park, improve repairing habitat, improve overall public safety within the park because the fire danger is high. We're currently in an extreme drought, and so the longer that we wait to do this, the more the understory dries out and creates additional problems as the years go by. The grant portion for Buckhorn Lakes is a forest health management plan and mitigation plan, where they will plan how best to proceed to protect the critical water infrastructure up there, the watershed, so to speak, and reduce fire danger in that area. We do have some key critical infrastructure that abuts to the city property that's critical for our communications network here. The plan is eventually to work on those Arroyos and create some mitigation planning with the city forester. Funds are hard to come by, and it appears that they will be harder to come by in the future, so, but that is our plan.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I'm really pleased to see the idea of getting some of the invasive species taken out, especially like you said, Paul, we're in a drought year, we're going to have lesser water, and Russian olive and tamarisk take far greater percentage of water than other vegetation down there do. So if we can get rid of those trees, we have more water then for the better trees that we'd like to preserve, and bushes.
Yes, ma'am. And this also gives Dan the opportunity to continue his partnership with Rivers Edge West to proceed with those invasive species eradication projects along the river.
Yeah, because it's more than just cutting them down.
It's not that we hate Russian olives, but we hate Russian olives. All right. Any other questions? All right. General city council discussion, any items?
Thanks, guys.
Staff comments? Any staff comments? I'm know, I know that Mr. Murphy has something.
Better be good news.
And here comes Shani.
Ooh.
Uh-oh.
Just want to update you. I sent an email out on Saturday, I believe it was, on the incident that occurred on Main Street on Friday. So as part of the new wireline job, they did have a line rupture while hot-tapping it. It's a pretty rare event that something like that happens. The contractor that was doing it, they had, they'd done this for decades, never seen it. We've seen it twice, and the cases we saw, the torque was incorrect on the tap. That wasn't the case here. Everything was right. So we think it was actually to do with some of the stresses that were on the pipe from the directional drilling. And so nobody was hurt. Those can be very serious incidences, because what happens is while they're drilling into it, it actually splits open. And so a lot of water is released at a very short amount of time on a guy down in a hole, which can be a very dangerous situation. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, and then the contractor quickly was able to work to get it shut down, and has been working with business owners through his insurance on any, because some did have water enter into the front door. With that much water coming out all at once, there's just plain nowhere for that water to go. It's an eight-inch, and it split open, yeah, about five feet long. It's a lot of water. So, yeah, every, again, nobody was, nobody was hurt. That's the most important part. And they are revising, so, you know, the reason they were doing it the way they were doing it was to try and keep those shutdowns as short as possible. We're likely going to revise that to either do localized shutdowns when we're tapping each reach. We'll coordinate with owners on the timing of that, or throttle the pipe back to where if it did break, it's a very small release, or manageable, so that you don't get the drainage system overwhelmed. So I want to let you know what occurred. The contractors owned it very well. Their insurance, I mean, we carry insurance on all of our contractors for these reasons. So systems are in place to make sure everybody's made whole. And they are still working to get everything, and the product won't be complete, but they'll have everything as written into their contract, that they're safe and ready for the Fourth of July parade, so no trench plates, there'll be trench pat, trench cuts and things, but no trench plates within the parade route, all equipment off of Main Street, all of that. So should be, it'll still be a construction zone, but it will be safe and ready to accept all the people to come down for the parade, so.
Does it have any, did it have any impact on business operations of any of the businesses downtown?
The bigger challenge in that reach is this, as they're pressing down, you know, we wrote it to where each block is closed one at a time. I'm not aware of anybody who had to close for an extended period. For the most part, the contractors able to get in and get the most out. I'm still getting the details and all of that, so I can't say for sure, but generally, no major shutdowns or anything that I'm aware of.
I spoke to a couple of the business owners right there, and they were very understanding that this was a freak accident, and that even though they had water enter the building, that they were, they were not mad, they were just very, very polite and very pleasant about it, so.
Cool, that helps.
What was it? Where? Where was it?
Oh, yeah, this is the corner of Unc in Maine.
Oh, so right downtown.
Yep. Yeah, so trying to get through the downtown core first, just to get that button up. Their hope is to patch right behind it as they go, so that we're starting to get 100% on certain reaches. There's work going on everywhere on Main Street right now, but to start getting, getting the worst of the impacts done and out as they work their way east, so. So they started with the hardest part first.
Scott, I appreciate you notifying us, because you know sometimes we get calls and questions, and we don't necessarily have the answers.
Sure. Yeah, and I, in that, you had the contact information for insurance. Feel free to pass that along to anybody who may need it, so.
I assume we'll be doing a press release with all of the insurance information?
It's localized to a couple, and they're all in the loop, and they've been working directly with them. So I think everybody who's, needs to know, and we'll talk about it at DART tomorrow as well, but I think everybody who needs to know has all the information they need to work with the insurance. work with the insurance.
Very good.
It wasn't that widespread of an incident, so.
All right, thank you.
Thankfully, yes.
All right, good morning. I just wanted to wrap up our date for the public open house for the 2026 budget. We kind of talked about this early in the year, and looking at calendars, it looks like November 4th. We usually do it before a city council meeting, just to condense meetings, so I just wanted to run that by you all, make sure that date would work. It's the first reading of the budget as well, so that concerned me a little bit, but it's really the only date that works for staff this year, between October 15th and the first reading.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Head nods.
All right, sounds great, thank you.
All right, any other staff reports?
I have one. So we, I have a note from William Woody, just to share with everyone, that we have a new tourism website. So we, we had been working with a software company called Simple View for the past several years, and it was getting to be where the costs outweighed the benefit to the community and to the city. So William and David Spear and some other team members worked over the past five months to transition us to a different company called Dream Co., and they are saving us about $40,000 a year as far as the creation and hosting of the new tourism website. So when you get a chance and you want to check it out, go to visitmontrose.com and give William Woody via email any input for changes you'd like to see, or some, anything related to usability of the website, or really glaring things that you think should be on there that maybe were on the other one and didn't make it through the transition. But he, right now, thinks it's a really good working product as of last week, and he's continually working out any of the new bugs and cleaning it up a little bit. So visit montrose.com, go check it out. And it's a WordPress site, so it makes it easy to manage, and very common across the country to have the WordPress design rather than a proprietary system like we had before, which makes it easy to train on as well for our staff at the visitor's center and our contractors that we work with on marketing and graphic design and that kind of thing.
Great. Anything else from staff? Seeing none, then we are adjourned, and we do have an executive session immediately following this meeting, so if we could take about five, 10 minutes, and then we'll kind of reconvene.